...
So it's been quiet, does that mean they accepted the letter?
Well, no, and so we have, I told Chris always, um, she's waiting here back.
Okay, I figured, I was just joking.
But, no, 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 but, you know, I was, as I was driving in, we were talking, I said, well, Chris, you know, we've been talking a while ago, what we've heard is, if it's something that needs to be.
I'm not trying to be hard to get along with us, wherever.
Oh, no, you're not, you're being wonderful.
Now, you go tell him I'm worth two hundred K a month.
Yes, I will.
Damn it, I meant to ask for a permanent parking space under the building, so that when I revert back, I don't have to deal with the weather. Oh, man, I wish I could just get into the deck across the street behind the old public health building. I've been on the list for that since I got here in eighteen, and they keep saying, oh, you haven't moved up yet.
Yeah, yeah, something happens in there.
I bet they're all in HR.
I don't know where they are.
I'm terrible, I know. How you doing?
Hanging in there, time enough to see where that comes about.
What do you think, I hear you say?
Yeah, I'm, um, yeah, I don't know, you know, since I've been here, well, you know, my whole career.
Really?
Yeah, al- almost thirty years that I have, oh, twenty seven, most of that was over by now, and we had, um, um, that's, but they've all been like these four or five years.
You thinking about, you thinking, not necessarily short term, just kind of like, yeah, I can kind of see my, my.
I see, I could see, um, I could see, because this is my side, you know, that it is, and, um, that has been really just, like, close, and it's, 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 um, quite a good blessing that we have an environment where that I can do what I have to do, that I have such support, it's a, it's a blessing, but, um, you know.
My whole thing, I mean, years, you know, I don't have to work life balance, and I, and that's why I think I don't want to have to retire and find something part time, because.
Wow, yeah, that's, I'm just, yeah.
Because I, it's like, I want to enjoy the retirement I'm given.
And, right, absolutely, because each day is a year, and, um, you know, and that's the thing, I mean, like, if I had, you know, five years, about six months, I'd be like, well, what could you do in your life? And that has really resonated with me, really, and I had about three and a half years before he came, and he probably made me right at the house, but, you know.
I know what you mean. I got a son who's, he's like, hell, I can't find a place I can afford, but he is so ready to be gone. We get along good, but he is ready to be, he wants to be his own person. I'm glad of it. Ain't red. Oh. Okay, getting what Jimmy was doing in the car today. Oh, you like, I didn't want them, yeah. Hey, did you hear that the mics giving me the mic beside mics are, like? Because they never usually come on with their own, now, these mics gotta be in front of me and on the other side. Okay, because, don't tap them again, because they're usually not on, um. Huh? It's not, but you can't turn them off, not at their own, you can't turn them off, and if you say anything or partying or something on the other side, it's gonna take you off for good life. The mics in. You got time to run down here, let me see one. Okay. He didn't, he said, he can't pick up one thing, I said, he come back here and give me. You tap those. They own. Like, excuse me? Oh, no, they usually not on. Have you? I know. I'm losing, I'm losing. Okay, no, maybe second option is this. Okay, we'll have to work around it.
I know. I know.
Evening, everyone. The board has met in closed session. Um, no action was taken, direction was given to staff. Uh, we are now beginning our regular session portion of the meeting, begin with the public charge. The Board of County Commissioners asks its members and citizens to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with the board and fellow citizens. At any time, should any member of the board or any citizen fail to observe this public charge, the chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until the individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the chair will recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. As a courtesy to others, please turn off cell phones during the meeting. And now, I will ask Commissioner Jacobs to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. I'll now pass it to our clerk for announcements.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. I will read the announcements published in tonight's agenda. Everyone is invited to the nineteenth annual Durham City County Employee Martin Luther King Junior Observance Program on Thursday, January twenty-fifth, at eleven-thirty AM. The event will be held at First Presbyterian Church, located at three oh five East Main Street, downtown Durham. Dr. Mark Anthony Neal, James B. Duke, distinguished professor of African and, and African and African American Studies at Duke University, will be our keynote speaker. This free event will feature remarks from local leaders and elected officials and musical selections by Kimberly Mitchell. There is a link on the website with additional information. Durham Pre-K is holding a family information session on Saturday, February third, from ten till ten-thirty AM, to help families learn about the Durham Pre-K application process for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The session will have a Spanish interpretation available and will allow participants to learn about Durham Pre-K, how to complete the application, and what to expect from the process. You can register by accessing the link that's available online as well. The Durham County Soil and Water Conservation District holds annual conservation-themed contests to promote students' attitude of stewardship for our natural resources. All Durham County students in grades three to twelve are eligible to participate. For information detailing the current year theme of the living soil, along with rules, tips, and more, you can visit dcoinc.gov backslash SWCD and click on Environmental Education tab. Entries are due by January fifteenth at five PM. The Durham County Cooperative Extension is offering a grafting workshop on Saturday, February tenth, from ten-thirty till eleven AM, followed by a scion exchange from eleven AM to twelve noon at the Extension Office, located at seven twenty-one Foster Street. Tickets are five dollars and they are nearly sold out. Join us to learn how to graft your own plants to produce both flowers and fruit, and there is a link for registration. The twenty-twenty-four Deco Cares recipient organization applications are now open to all nonprofits serving our community. Deco Cares is the annual Durham County Government Employee Giving Campaign, in which our employees donate funds to those nonprofit agencies chosen as an annual recipient organization. Applications will open through February sixteenth of twenty-twenty-four. For additional information or to apply to be a recipient organization, please visit durhamcountycares.org backslash apply. The draft fiscal year twenty-five Transit Work Program from the Durham County Transit Department will be available for public comment in February twenty-twenty-four. Information regarding the draft work program can be found on the staff working group website, there is a link for that. Uh, questions or comments can also be directed to the staff working group administrator. The Durham County Board of Elections will be conducting voter ID outreach events in twenty-twenty-four at the Durham County Library locations. At these events, eligible residents will be able to get a free photo identification card on site and get updated information on the North Carolina photo ID requirement. The next session will be held on Saturday, February seventeenth, at Southwest Regional Library, located at thirty-six oh five Shannon Road, from twelve to three noon, I'm sorry, three PM. To see more details on the events and download the event flyer, there is a link to click. And you can also visit the, uh, State Board of Elections website for additional information on the North Carolina photo ID requirement. A reminder to Durham County voters that the early voting for the March fifth, twenty-twenty-four primary election, primary and election will be held from Thursday, February fifteenth, through Saturday, March second. Find out more information about early voting and same-day registration at the Deco Board of Elections website. Um, that's decovotes.com. And lastly, be safe and keep your family safe by getting your updated COVID-nineteen vaccine and flu shot, and pick up your free vaccine, I'm sorry, free COVID-nineteen test at the Durham County Department of Public Health. It's located at four fourteen East Main Street. COVID vaccines are available by appointment only, while flu shots can be appointment or walk-in. Schedule your COVID vaccine by calling nine one nine five six zero seven six five eight, and schedule your flu shots by calling nine one nine five six zero seven six zero eight. More information can be found at decopublichealth.org. That concludes the announcements published in tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Clerk Wallace. I'll now turn it to the board to see if there's any additional announcements. Vice Chair Burns?
Not necessarily announcement, but a huge thank you. Uh, I wanna send out a, a big thank you to the manager, everybody in emergency management, everybody in public safety that I'm not thinking of. Last week could have been really rough with the power being out and the Tammy, Claudia, Maurice, everybody, all the same. Um, to, um, Deborah Craig Ray, like, it didn't matter what I asked for. I said, oh, my gosh, we don't have this in Spanish, can we get it in Spanish? Y'all turned it right back around. Um, we opened up a high school, there were beds, there were cots, there was food, the warming stations. Shout out to Joanne and everybody else who opened up DSS when their own homes were cold. So I just wanna publicly say thank you, y'all are the best people in the whole wide world. And y'all did not take a curtain call. And that is a classy thing to do. Um, I saw other elected officials taking curtain calls for y'all work, it didn't sit with me well. Um, so, thank y'all for being classy, thank y'all for taking care of our folks, and, um, making sure nobody had to be cold or hungry last week, I appreciate it. Also, are we sharing on our website? Um, I know that Duke Energy does have a forum set up, uh, for folks who lost food, food that might have spoiled in the deep freezing refrigerator. So I just wanna continue to make sure that we share that, so we can at least try to help people recoup what they can that they might have lost last week, and that's all, the only announcement I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burns. Commissioner Jacobs?
I just wanted to piggyback on what Commissioner Burns just said. Uh, we had, um, DSS staff who were working at, um, the shelter. We had public health staff, we had our library staff who were helping with the warming stations. It was a full-on county, Durham County team effort, so thank you to everyone.
Thank you, and also, thank you to the small businesses that stepped up and I know helped provide some of those meals, uh, hot meals, uh, for families, especially the kids, uh, who were in the schools that had been closed down due to the power issue, uh, to make sure they still received breakfast and lunch and meals during that time. Announcements on the side? Um, I will now ask if there's any adjustments to the agenda. Sorry, I skipped over that. Okay, seeing no adjustments, we will move on to the minutes. Uh, seeking approval for our work session, January second, twenty-twenty-four minutes, and our regular session on January eighth, twenty-twenty-four, uh, minutes, to approve those.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Jacobs, seconded by Vice Chair Burns. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved, five to zero. We'll now reach our consent agenda. The consent agenda is filled with items that our staff and management have all worked tirelessly on and presented to us at work sessions and worked with us to educate us and give us an opportunity to ask questions in the community to learn about. I will ask and see if there are any questions or items that. that Commissioners would like to pull from the consent agenda. Commissioner Jacobs?
Yeah, I, I just wanna note, th- these are actually things that we didn't make it onto the work session, but I, I did want to just draw attention to the two items about the Lincoln Community Health Center parking lot expansion. I see Brenda and Perry sitting out here, these are items that have been really, we've been working really hard to move forward for a long time, and I know that Lincoln Community Health Center staff are gonna really, really appreciate the parking lot expansion, so I'm very excited about that. I do have a question about twenty-four dash zero zero three-two, the DSS, um, building, um, expansion of the, or re- kinda updating the RFP with the Development Finance Institute. I am thrilled, thank you, Madam Manager, for moving this forward. Um, I do have a question about the scope of work for this, and because I'm so glad that they're going back and we're getting this moving in. Since it's been three years, and not only have some of the economic conditions changed, but also even thinking about the needs of our community, I didn't see anything in there that was related to kind of getting community input and engagement again, or revisiting kind of what are gonna be the priorities if we do an Rther, do an RFP for this. Just wondering about that piece of that, cause they helped us with that as well, in the past.
So, this, um, extension is really to help update the information. I think it's been about two or three years since you all saw this, and so they're gonna go back and refine, refine and revisit some of the information in there. That'll help inform what will go in the RFP, and we're looking to make the RFP broad enough to get ideas for what we can do with the building, and then, once we make a selection, then have those community conversations about how we outfit it.
Sounds great, thank you so much.
Other questions? Okay, seeing no more questions, do we hear an approval for this consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Howerton, seconded by Vice Chair Burns, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to approve the consent agenda passes five to zero, that moves us forward to... Yes, and I wanna offer Commissioner Burn, Vice Chair Burns, a point of personal privilege.
Somebody must have done something really bad today, cause my mama just walked in. I don't know which one of y'all it was, she has never walked into these chambers, but my mama just walked in, I'm just putting everybody on notice, cause I am not the dangerous one. So, I'm joking, she said, hey, ma, how you doing? Okay, we can move on.
Yeah, also...
Tenasha comes in here all the time, but my mama ain't never walked in here, so, thank y'all, I'm good.
Highlight our favorite sister, Burns.
The favorite Burns.
Tenasha's here.
Welcome to Durham, mommy, okay.
That moves us to our public hearing items. Uh, we have a public hearing on not to exceed, on not to exceed eighty-seven million limited obligation bond series two oh two for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four A and twenty-twenty-four B. Uh, the board is requested to hold a public hearing on the negotiation of an amendment to an installment financing contract in connection with the execution and delivery of not to exceed eighty-seven million limited obligation bonds and the related projects to be financed and referenced thereby. Following the public hearing, the board is requested to adopt the attached resolution, which authorizes the negotiation to adopt the attached resolution, which authorizes the negotiation of an amendment to an installment financing contract in connection with the execution and delivery of not to exceed eighty-seven million limited obligation bonds. Copies of all the referenced documents are on file with the chief officer, available. So I will pass it to our clerk.
I'd like to report to the board that a public hearing noticed relating to financing, one, renovations to a shopping center, a portion of which will house the county's Board of Elections office; two, the construction of a pump station known as the Snow Hill Road Pump Station; three, renovations and public safety improvements to various county school facilities; and four, the construction of a parking facility located at the five hundred block of East Main Street in the county pursuant to an amendment to an installment financing contract in a principal amount not to exceed eighty-seven million, was the stat, was published on January eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, stating that the board will hold a public hearing thereon, on January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, Clerk Wallace. The board will now hear anyone who wishes to be heard on the questions of the proposed amendment to the contract and the projects to be financed thereby. So I will now open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone sign up to speak?
We did not have anyone sign up to speak, and there, and there's no one online.
I will then entertain a motion, or, do there any questions from the board? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing, or, yeah.
Madam, oh, Madam Chair, I move that we, um, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Okay, I will now take a vote, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, this public hearing is closed. Now, a resolution entitled Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Dur- County of Durham, North Carolina, approving an amendment to the installment financing agreement and delivery thereof and related matters, is before the board for consideration, authorizing staff to move forward as county representatives with the proposed financing, the projects the clerk just described, and authorizing the execution and delivery of certain documents in connection with the financing. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I make the motion?
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Carter, seconded by Commissioner Jacobs, all in favor? Oh, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seeing none, motion passes five to zero. And that brings us back to our boards and commission appointments. I will pass it to our attorney, Curtis Massey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have tallied the votes and can advise that your selection for the Board of Health pharmacist position is Jean Rhea. Your selection for the Durham County Women's Commission at-large position is Kirsten Bethay. And your selection for the Durham Planning Commission at-large position is Matt Kopack.
Thank you, Attorney Massey. Thank you to every individual who had applied and signed up to serve Durham County, and thank you. And I look forward to working with the individuals who have been selected to serve and look forward to the individuals who weren't selected to continue to look at the boards and commissions that are open and available, uh, for opportunities to serve in other ways. That brings us to the end of our agenda. I will, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Moved by Vice Chair Burns, seconded by Commissioner Howerton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.